Call me to order. This is a meeting of the Joint Protections of Persons and Properties Subcommittee Town Council Meeting. This is a revised agenda. Today is Monday, April 29th, 2024, 6:00 P.M. Veterans Room. It's a possible a call with the Town Council may be present to discuss the agenda item, but voting rights shall be limited to the Subcommittee members in attendance. Also to note, the items listed which may be discussed at the meeting are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items may not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting has been video and audio recorded. Rule called Citizen Member Julian.
Present.
Citizen Member LaRicheau.
Present.
Counselor Dow. Absent. Counselor Ortiz. Absent. We have a call. Number three approved minutes of March 18th, 2024. So. Second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, number four is review, discuss FY 25, in parentheses, 1240 inspection services, building budget in the amount of $198,319 and take a motion to submit to Town Council as presented.
Chair, at this time I'd like to recuse myself from this.
General. Okay, I'll make the motion. I need a counselor to come in on the inspection budget because of recoups. Derek? We already got two, but we don't have a call.
Two or five.
Come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, just the highlights of this budget right now is the salary and wages. Salary and wages of the personnel include the Assistant Building Commissioner and the Admin Assistant for those departments. The salaries reflected in this increase are simply that of the 2% that we've done for other departments as well as staff increases. So there's no other changes outside of that right now. I'll get to another item later on as we discuss it, okay?
Yep.
All right. As regards to the salaries of the afforded individuals, the Assistant Wire Inspector, Glass Department Inspector, the Assistants, and the Sailor Waits and Measures. At this time, we have proposed 2% increase in those line items. However, Michelle Dean in the Inspections Department, we're taking a really close look at the inspectors, specifically the Wire Inspector, the number of inspections that are done, and when you cost that out, he is not being paid compensated to the level that we believe that Wire Inspector should be. We're looking at different models within the department as to how to fund that. So we recognize that that is an issue. We're trying to determine what's best for Southbridge as well as what's fair for the Wire Inspector. There's different models out there that look to fund Wire Inspectors at 70% of the revenue that's come in or salary, and we're looking at different models as to maybe a salary and then look at the number of inspections that are completed and do a percentage of that. So that is going to be a work in progress that will come back later on once we refine that. But right now, this is the percentage that we have in here. Because of, if you look at 70%, 70% of the total revenue, when you look at the total revenue, you look at like the Gas Inspector, you know, that percentage is pretty fair with the number of inspections that they do and all that, but when you look at the Wire. So we want to make sure that whatever we do for the Wire Inspector, we also do for the Gas Inspector, so we need to do something that's fair and equitable for those departments. So we are working on that. That has been an issue that has been ongoing since I've been here, but it's something that we will definitely be addressing in the very, very near future, okay? On that one. Regards to the car allowance. We had a budget at 5,700. So what that is, is I believe we have to make a correction.
Yeah, it should have been $4,500. Mike pointed that out to me today, and I didn't want to change it without speaking with the council, but that represents $125 a month for three inspectors. If you do the math, it's $4,500.
Okay. So we would, we're going to drop that to 4,500. Basically, we have within there, the language we currently have says if gas goes to three, under $3, it's $100 per month. If it's over $3, it's $125 a month. I think it's just fair, and the way gas prices are going, I think they're going to stay near the $3. It's just depending on where you get the price of the gas, so it's just fair to say $125. They don't get any other from maintenance of their vehicles or anything else. They use their personal vehicles, so $125 per month. We just went to the higher level and said that was fair because gases.
So the correction, I'm showing $4,500 under the bandages projected, I think.
Uh, no, you're looking at item 51977, car allowance.
519700, I had 5,700 on top and 4,500 on the bottom.
I make a motion to change it to 4,500.
No, we're looking at this sheet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's just a way of that. So it will be 4,500. We'll change it in the budget.
Do you think we need to make a motion now? I would say we need to make a motion to reduce it.
Somebody second that?
You could.
Whether we need a motion or we're going to make a motion to send this up because technically they haven't changed it because doesn't the full council have to agree with the change?
Right, so we're betting, we're saying it's going to go to 4,500. That's the Town Manager's recommendation. When it goes up, it's going to be 4,500.
Okay.
All right. And then the rest of it is, the only other increase is print forms, which is just a cost increase for the forms that we need for that department. So that is the overall budget that we have presented. The one proposal that we will be bringing to council, and as you're aware, that when we did the general government budget, we had in the administration account, we had told you that there was salary administration account. We are proposing that we hire a full-time building commissioner for the building department.
And that one is in the salary reserve account?
It is in the salary reserve account that we already presented to council, that was already vetted by council. And what we would do is once, if that is approved by council for a full-time building commissioner, we would then rework this budget to, because as you can see, there is a line item within here for CDBG for the inspector. That number right now, this, and this is just the budget from last year, was 25,000 each. That number is actually increased in the CDBG budget grant. The grant actually allows, I believe, it's $60,000 for a full-time. This was for a part-time. They went to 100% and increased the number in the grant to approximately $60,000. So what we would do is look to take the Assistant Building Commissioner, partially fund that out of CDBG. So half the, approximately 70% of the job would be to do all those inspections that are required, that we don't do now, that are required under the codes for the five, four, oh, it was five?
The 110 inspections.
110 inspections. We haven't been able to do those because we haven't been able to fund this position. We would have the Assistant Building Commissioner do that within the CDBG and then also be the adjunct for all the other inspections that we would do in the department. And we budgeted that building commissioner at the A7, A7, Step 3 right now. So, and you know, we are required to have a building commissioner. We've been very fortunate to have not, over the last, what, three years, had interim services, had no pay to the town, but we can't continue to do that. So that's what our budget presentation would be. That's all I have for the inspection.
Any questions of anybody? Counsel?
So I thought that the reserve salary that you had set aside and we voted on, I thought that was for the union contract.
Well, we said that that was partial. We said it was the, that position. We said there was the assistant, the accountant analyst in that, and then any raises within the DQG, that's what we said at that meeting.
Any changes new to the budget for positions there in one location?
So, the bottom line is almost a 6% increase. So how is that reduction? Is that going to change the bottom line here?
If it's approved, then.
I presume it is, yes.
If it is approved at council, then yeah, we would have to adjust that to reflect what the salary is. Fully, fully salary assistant building commissioner to that proportional.
So you don't know if it's going to go down or up?
It would go down because obviously his salary is, or the assistant building commissioner's salary right now is fully funded within the budget, right? That's the only position we have funded right now. If we add the position and then take part of it from CDBG, essentially there is a reduction and would be a reduction.
All right, I mean, I see a code enforcement. I don't see a building commissioner in this budget.
Well, it's code, Assistant Building Commissioner, it does serve as the local building inspector as well.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, and local building inspector.
Local building, that's going to be the, combined into a building commissioner.
Yeah, it would be under that. It would have essentially the same duties, but the Assistant Building Commissioner.
All right. Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, any questions? All right, all those in favor of the FY 25 operating budget for inspection services? And the adjustments will be made when it goes before the full council.
Yeah, the reduction in that, in that one item until it's approved by council for that salary adjustment line item, that we would make all the adjustments and make sure when it's adequately put into units and collected.
All those in favor? Opposed? None, yes, present. Counselor Ortiz is in the building.
I'd like to thank the committee. Thank you. Amanda.
Thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Yes, you will. Thank you very much.
I'll slide around. Yep. Have a great night.
Number five is under review and discuss FY 2025, 1220, in parentheses, private budget in the amount of $3,184,689 and take a motion to submit to Town Council as presented. So.
Second.
Discussion, we're just going to get to it. All right, so, come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So what this budget reflects in the salary and wages is just whatever the staffing is today is what the staffing would be on July 1. No additional new positions. The only increase is for the normal collective bargaining, because they are in collective bargaining unit, and any steps that would be presented within that. So it only comes in at 3.19. Obviously, we had an experienced firefighter that had retired last year, so that balances some of those increases that might have normally been there, but that's what we have, okay?
And the salary, you go, 2% increase for the non-union people too?
Yeah. Part-time wages, there's a slight decrease in that, but it does maintain the number of call firefighters as we have on staff right now. So the chief just adjusted that. Overtime, you'll see that there is an increase in overtime, that overtime, despite the fact that we have added four firefighters to the payroll, activity continues to increase as it does throughout police and fire world. Over the last year, the department has seen an increase in ambulance calls of approximately, calendar year, 7.7% and fire calls at 7.6%. So obviously, that is, does impact still the overtime, even though we added personnel, we still have overtime because, you know, we need, maintain a shift of five, you know, two ambulances go out, one from the station, so we're trying to maintain that staffing level at that. So we do our best to manage overtime, but it unfortunately isn't necessarily evil. Out of those, that ambulance calls, if we do 4,200 ambulance calls a year, that does generate revenue to the Town of Southbridge. The revenue approximately with Medicare reimbursement is between 1.5 and 1.6% of revenue, which if you costed it out, it's about 66% of the personnel budget that we do capture in revenue, the ambulance receipts that we get in.
So the only thing I have to say on that part is the general public don't see the revenue that does come, because that goes into the general fund. It doesn't, it doesn't reflect the increases of the overtime. You're not going to see that. The general public isn't going to see that. They're going to see an increase in this, but they're not going to realize that with the four firefighters that we hired, we're also doing almost twice as many ambulance calls. And I know the fire calls have gone up too. So the money is being generated, but the general public doesn't see that. So I just wanted to make that well aware.
Thank you. That's a good point. The other increase you'll see is holiday pay. And in the holiday pay, in my conversations with the chief, last year, we had the four firefighters that came on mid-year in January, and when the budget was put together last year by the interim Town Manager and the staff, they essentially level funded that holiday pay and didn't account for those four additional firefighters. So that's why there's an increase in that holiday pay because of that, not proper accounting for, and the budget, and the same with the assignments, you know, those assignments, stipends and all that as well. So those are those increases in those two lineups. Any questions on those?
The increases for the assignments, it was originally budgeted for 184,000?
Yes.
And you're proposing the same amount?
For assignments? No, we're proposing.
Okay, 19320.
19302, yeah.
Is that increase as a result of the contract obligations and that kind of stuff?
Yes. You did see a decrease in longevity of 10%. That's because longer, more tenured firefighter had retired, so we have that. And then repair and maintenance of equipment, you know, there's an increase from 20,000 to 24,000. I think as we've talked about in the different budget cycles that we've talked about, is looking at those transfers that we get every year for the last five years and accounting for those and trying to increase those. Not to mention, again, I say, the cost of inflation and all that, so we're trying to account for that, so not always chasing these and trying to be reasonable.
You have a decrease in the tuition.
Yes, the chief did propose that because none, a lot of individuals are taking advantage of the tuition, so he has scrubbed the year for tuition. That's all he anticipates for the year.
Even though that we spent $4,000 this year so far?
That was what he had budgeted us.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I think that's that page. And then going down to the next page, the, any questions? You know, we have a $1,000 increase on licenses and permits and taxes, but small numbers they, they present increases, so we really try to be on everything else as conservative as possible, but really target those specific items that we know are typically have transfers and all that. And then the last page is the equipment on 58560. That was budgeted at one time at $66,000. There was a decrease over the last couple of years, and according to the chief, money had been taken for gear from that account before when we hired the other firefighters, so there was transfers out into the gear count. The gear count now is pretty stable for replenishment of gears, and there's an increase in that for that type of equipment. But outside of that, the overall budget increases 4.64%. Again, a big gap of that is taken up by salaries. I think we presented a pretty responsible budget based on the activity level that the fire department has.
Any questions?
Another question, right. Since the hiring of the four firefighters, I've been, and I stated on camera back then that I was going to hold the fire chief accountable. I held him accountable. I confronted him. I asked him for the numbers, and everything is up to where we discussed, and I thank you for that.
Anybody out there? Councilman McCarry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions. When I look at the uniform allowance, I remember it's the last year. Last year, you had 31 members, you had five probationary members. This year, you have 31 members and you have two probationary members, and yet it's higher than last year. Wouldn't it be lower than last year or higher? Because last year, you had five probationary members, this year you only have two probationary members. So why would it be higher?
Well, uniform allowance is based on contractual, so it goes based on the number of members.
And it says 31 members, the same as last year?
Right.
And this year, two probationary members. And I thought, well, maybe the cost of uniforms are up, but it's the same cost here, so just curious as to why the call, why the budget is higher if you have less probationary members? It's the same total members here, 31, 31 last year.
Was there an increase in the contract?
So there's no increase in the contract. Each union member gets $1,100 a year, so that is the number that you see for the 31. The second piece of that is that it's written in the contract, they, as a new employee, they only get $550 of it. They only get half of their uniform allowance. It's one of those things that was contractually agreed upon. So not only do I have to carry over the second half of the $5,500 from guys that are hired this year, the budget is put together with the whole over 550 and also the 31, 31 members. So that's why it's, it's not exactly $1,100. I have to carry over 550. I've had to do it a couple of times.
Does that make sense to you? So when, when a new person is hired, a uniform allowance should be $1,100 off the bat?
Okay.
They wait until six months is one year. So after their one year, they get the other 550 plus the $1,100 that they were entitled to for that year.
Oh, I see. So probation, they're expecting them to become full-time, then they get the full.
Yeah, after they finish their one year.
And then the assignments, why, why are they higher? Just explain that to me. I mean, I'm not denying it, I'm just saying, why would it be any different than last year besides that? So 4.9%.
It's all contractual, so the stipends increase within the contract?
It does. And that accounts for that almost 5% increase. And more time, 26% higher than last year.
Right.
If you're trying to level out the contract, though, how is it that you continue to have more overtime if you know that the time, you're trying to level it out, which is trying to level up the overtime, or are you in a spot where you can't level up the overtime?
Well, a lot of it goes to the increased number of calls. When you have like 7% to 80% number of calls, you still need the minimum man in that you needed at the station. So we're trying to accommodate the calls that they respond to as far as, and then keep the station staff for those additional calls.
All right, and I thought we hired four additional firemen?
We did.
We're not full staff yet?
We are.
Okay.
What I'm saying is when the two ambulances are out, you want to bring people back in for that third, possibly fourth call that you have.
I see.
There's just, if you look at the numbers, and I think the chief does a good job of sending them out to you, the number of simultaneous calls that we have, the second and third calls that are going on at the same time, it's, quite honestly, listening to that radio as much as I do now, I don't know how the fire department, and the police department do it. They're, they're very busy, so.
And are you getting fully reimbursed for your ambulance call?
I'll let the chief. I think we've had that conversation before because of the Medicare reimbursement. If we put in a bill for $3,000, what do we get, 600?
300.
300? So it's just, and I had this conversation actually with Senator Warren on Friday, when we talked about, they talked about the number of calls that went for the, like, the Center of Hope and, we do a great job, police, fire, and that's what they said, the Senator of Hope said, hey, you do a great job. What we talked about was, or what I said to her, is look, the state and the federal government really has to take a look at these reimbursements because we're providing these ancillary services and responses to these agencies, to group homes and all these other homes, but you haven't done anything on the Medicare. So your, and the comment was made that essentially, it was made by a person that was at that table, was it's really not South County, it should be Southbridge County, because we are the hub of all these social service agencies that all the surrounding towns feed into Southbridge, but we're responsible for all the services. And my point was, okay, you, we have all these services there, but state and local, state and federal, you've done nothing to help us on the local level to provide funding to provide services to these agencies. And I asked Senator Warren, you really need to take a look at that. And it was branched off by another person that had the same type of conversation. But we are responsible for these services and we do it, but the state and federal government have to start stepping up to provide adequate reimbursements for the level of services that we provide.
Yeah, I think last year during budget, they said they billed $4 million and they received 1.3 or 1.4 of reimbursement, and we are unable to build the balance because of the agreement with Medicare. Am I correct? So you're only allowed, if it's a $1,600 bill, you only get the $300 reimbursement and you can't go after the additional money.
But the chief does go off for that additional grant for that additional money, which takes a lot of paperwork to chase down, but he does try to chase all the available money that's available.
Any other questions? So we're looking at a budget of $3,184,689, am I correct?
That's right.
So the motion's been made, the second, any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Four in favor, one absent. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, everybody. We'll be standing by for checks.
Mutualize. Hey there. How you doing, Chief? Agenda item number six, review and discuss FY 2025, parentheses, 1210, police department budget in the amount of $5,259,75, and then take a motion to submit to council as presented. So.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The police department budget, obviously, the salary and wages is again the biggest line item increase, but permanent line also, we have to remember, also includes all the police officers that are at the authorized strength that we have. There's no new police office positions proposed in this budget. It's a maintain the authorized strength of the number of offices that we have at 40. Also, the, this also, 40.
You have 39.
He's authorized at 40.
You're authorized at 40?
40, yeah.
And then this budget also includes the, all the dispatches that we have in the account. So that's the biggest line item. Part-time wages are level funded. Longevity, that's a contractual longevity item, so we have nothing changed there. We can't do anything about it, it's contractual. The witness is a reduction again, and then the witness fees, so the officers and call back to court, and that's a decrease, it's like court time, well, I'm sure there's a lot of court time. Uniform allowance, that's contractually, the uniform allowance increase there. Repair and maintenance in R and M, MB, there's a slight increase from 8,000 to 10,000. As you can see, the 2024 revised budget is 13,000. You'll see that as a negative, but it's actually an increase because it's taken what the revised budget was, all the transfers within. So while we're bringing it up from the 8,000, we'll, we've transferred at least 13,000 in, we're only requesting 10,000, so we're trying to potentially increase that one. Data processing, the data processing cost this year is the renewal of the accreditation software. The police department was recently accredited, which is a great complement to the, did you finally get your accreditation?
Yes, but it's official in June, June 27.
But, so, you know, a lot of that has to do with accreditation, the software for the accreditation, plus the body cam storage, new cost, and the reported software IMC, obviously there's an increase in that. So, any questions on the first page?
Copy and maintenance contract.
Yeah, thank you. So the chief had six, copiers, three industrial. So the chief had six copiers, three industrial, and three just normal ones. He changed those printers out to a lease program, so he's leasing those printers. So in the long run, it will save us money because of the cost of ink, but this was because we instituted a lease program for copiers. And that is something I think we talked about in the other budgets, that we're going to look at our overall lease of all copiers within the town buildings and go to centralize it. Dean's going to be working on that program for a centralized copier.
And that was going to be my question, specifically related to the police, but in the townwide, if we had one contract for all copiers in that, I know when I was with the Red Cross in Florida, each office had at least a copier. And they went to a massive copier for the whole state of Florida and it came in ridiculously lower than.
For a contract?
For a contract.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so that's something we're going to be looking at is as far as building as well to a centralized, you know, contract. And Dean has been working, we've dealt as two, working together on like French River bids and all that to do some collaborative purchasing. So anywhere we can save money, we're trying to find every avenue to save money collaboratively.
Any questions on page one? Okay, we'll go to page two.
Page two, the increase here in specialized services from thirteen thousand to twenty thousand. That cost is primarily driven by the animal kennel cost for Oxford, and we'll have a transfer later on this evening for that. So, and I have spoken to Chairman Lauso about the project, that's, we're still waiting on some things, but until we do that, we have, you know, Oxford. I mean, rightfully so, I mean, if we were on the other foot and Oxford was coming here, we would want to be paid for that. So that's the driver of that specialized services. Motor vehicle P and A, again, you'll see that there's an increase to thirty thousand, even though it's a negative, but we're going to go across. It's because of the revised budget year-to-date. So we were budgeted for twenty thousand, the revised is thirty-two, three, five, eight. So we're recommending to go from twenty to thirty thousand for the parts. Because again, prices have gone up, tires are expensive and all that, so that's the reason for that. On the safety, safe PAT SUP.
Patrol supply.
Patrol supplies.
Safety patrol supply.
That's an increase of twenty-five percent, and that is driven for tasers and ammo. There's obviously been a cost. Every officer has to be trained in firearms, normally twice a year.
At least.
At least a minimum of twice a year, sometimes three, plus taser training. Those cartridges are expensive because you have to deploy those trained cartridges. So that's the cost increase of that. So, any questions on?
Have you been through you, the chief? Have you been coming across anything where you can't get parts for cars lately?
Yes, absolutely.
I know there was a point where you couldn't get some, and then they all got rectified, but I didn't know if you were still falling into that problem.
We aren't as much as we were, and that account, the motor vehicle parts, it's been the same for fourteen years now.
Yeah.
We've had the same number. So obviously, especially people in the mechanic world, those costs have risen dramatically.
Are you down cruisers right now because of it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Page three.
Conference and meetings and dues and subscriptions, those two items right there are also driven because of the accreditation and the dues, so that's on the conference and meetings, the accreditation, they have to attend not only the chief, but also other members of the command staff to attend those conference and meetings for different items related to that, so.
Chief, I mean, who, the safety patrol people out there, through the school crossing guards, where does that come into here, school?
Through, Mr. Chair, yeah, the part-time salary we pay them. The police department, for some reason, I don't know why, is responsible for paying crossing guards. And we pay for them out of that part-time salary. It's always been like that, doesn't mean it's right, but it's been like that since probably, probably two thousands.
Do we ask the school for a portion of that funds?
No.
No?
Well, we do get to count that as one of our Schedule nineteen expenses on their end-of-year report. There's probably somewhere in the area of two million dollars worth of town expenses that are carried in our budget that we get to use as a credit to meeting our net school spending requirement. And those are all itemized on a report that's called the end-of-year report, filed by the school, it's signed off by the town accountant. And any town-related expenses that are directed towards the school and directly associated with the school are reported there.
Now, are they anticipating a two percent increase also?
High fat.
High fivers?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I, that expense is probably, if I'm going to guess, thirty-five thousand dollars a year. It's thirteen crossing guards, four hours a day. I don't want to say it's short money, but it's.
It's short money, but you know, I think sometimes, sometimes, you know, their pay is not the greatest, it's what, fifteen bucks an hour? So, you know, they're out there in their bad weather and stuff like that. And I know we've had some issues with some high-reach drivers and stuff like that, and what you guys end up going on. But as long as they get a little bit of an increase, it's.
Very bad intersection.
Right.
You know, you look at the bottom of West Street and High Street, Dale Street, where it all converges. Women might get crossing. Right, exactly.
And office equipment, the increase is for replacement of chairs, dispatch chairs, anything to that. Those dispatch chairs, those dispatchers are in those chairs twenty-four hours. They do go for a little bit, but. And that's total overall budget increase is five point four eight. Again, addressing anything that was underfunded over the last few years and the normal salary increases.
Any questions of the chief? Or the town manager on the budget?
Thank you, through chairs. There's a lot of chairs. That especially don't exercise, don't run like the police.
Hey, if I may, I think on the budgets of both police, fire, and inspections, we see that you've incorporated, I believe, if I understood it right, all the transfers that have taken place so far, because last year they either was zeroed out or weren't fully funded, and they were coming back throughout the year for transfers. So you've taken into account those transfers and hopefully, we're not going to need any transfers coming up.
I'm not going to say we're not going to be transfers, but we're trying to go up incrementally without a big increase. If we wanted to say, hey, we're going to fully fund all the transfers that we had, you'd see a much better increase. We've tried to be conservative, but also be able to address those things that were always, you know, historically coming up. I mean, nobody knows what inflation's going to do in the future, or some major thing may break, because that happens. But we're trying to address those that typically we have increases or transfers, increase them in a moderate amount, but still be conservative for the tech.
Well, I think it's important, when Mrs. Voter on by the full council, that a presentation you made explaining that last year, we did no favors by coming in with a zero, well, I should say level funded account, and they just wiped things out and we're putting money back in. Any questions of the chief or the town manager? All right, this vote is for five million, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, seventy-five dollars, a five point four eight percent increase. All those in favor? Post? I reckon note that council, don't see it.
I just, also, also, one of the things that we will be looking at too is you'll notice there's a, and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, I neglected, the fire department, we did not put a water sewer increase in that one, but there is a water sewer increase in this one. I think when we talked at the DPW Subcommittee, for those that weren't here, other councils that weren't here, we, in our expense, we're doing the best to have no rate increase to the taxpayers. So any rate increase that we, if likely within the budget, we would look to make those adjustments through the budget. Anything to add on that?
You nailed it.
I have one question you brought to mind. How about the trash pickup now, since we're in the contract?
We have a line item in the administrative line item to cover the cost.
That would be the third thing, but how much?
Right, but that will operate the same way. You know, we'll be paying the town for those, and we did make provisions.
Okay, good, thank you.
Item number seven, review and discuss FY twenty twenty-five, twelve ninety-seven, streetlight budget in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand dollars, entertain a motion to submit to council as presented.
Sold.
Second.
Okay, I can just, I will have a.
Oh, it should be.
It's missing. I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna.
One, two, nine, seven.
I'll make copies of it.
That's okay.
But it's two hundred thirty thousand, the original budget this year is two twenty, year-to-year expenses, so we did an increase of approximately ten thousand to account for any of that. We may be able to refine that a little bit more as we get closer to the vote on the twentieth. I will say there is a LED light project going on to replace the streetlights in town. So I have to kind of research that a little bit more because there will be a incentive rebate back to the town. Originally, it was going to be at some point during this fiscal year, but they're going to wait till they close out all the changeover, the LED lights, before they put through that reduction. So we're going to have to see how that reduces through the change of the lights.
Did the town also put money towards that changeover?
I, I'll have to research that, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer. My understanding was it's a rebate coming to the town, so. I had just one email from the person that Sean McLean is doing Green Communities, I believe, but I could get more information on that.
Can we find when the end date was going to be? Because this was proposed many years ago, I think.
Yeah, I'll dig out the date.
Okay.
But at this point, we're just proposing an increase as a placeholder. Hopefully, we can gather more information as we get to the vote on the twentieth. It'd be nice to drop that down.
Any questions on the streetlights?
You don't, you don't have a general percentage of how much they've already done in town, do you?
Fifty percent, is what they said. Fifty percent of the lights.
So it should go down no matter what?
I would hope so. But we haven't seen that in the bills yet, so.
Right.
We'll see the bills. But again, I think we brought up at the last meeting too, with National Grid, we have some net metering, we have to adjust. So we have a big project ahead of us to look at the electric bills and what we have for credits and try to balance all that out. But that is a very complicated Schedule Z, it's called, that we have to do. And we're going to, we've been concentrating primarily on priorities, it's about getting finance department squared away, and staffed up, getting this budget together, so we're doing it incrementally. But that is on our project list in the very, very near future. Because the electric company would like to see that balanced out too. Because we have some huge credits in some accounts and some small ones, so we would look to equalize it in the budget.
I was just going to comment to the public that there's a lot of streetlights out in town. And I will, especially coming in from Dudley, and I would assume that they are definitely in good wisdom, not going to repair the old lights and setting up for the LED replacements.
But if you give me a list, we do have a very good liaison with National Grid right now, we can get an answer for those, for what areas they are from.
Who, who covers electricity, like, for this building?
It's within the town hall budget.
In the town hall budget? So that power changer out there that charges the cars?
That's within that budget, yes.
So you're going to remove those?
We do have, we do have a proposal to have that replaced and put three units out here. I'd have to further look at where that third unit's going to go because the proposal is to put it where and where the handicap parking spots are, but it would be a charge station. It wouldn't cost the town anything to change it over, but I have to look at that project a little bit more deeply as to where they're going to put that third one. But they are planning on putting a charge.
And I think you told the other night, all the electricity, police, fire is actually going to come in?
We're going to try to bring that into a program, so we can manage it.
All right. Any other questions on the streetlights?
Thank you, Chair, through, I think we went through a PACD, it was supposed to put the station in the back and move it from the front. That was a.
Well, that was for, that was for our station, our free one, for our town vehicle. But we're talking about putting a charge one that somebody could pay to. They would come in with a charge card, but we'd have to change it.
I know we've got a grant for that, to move those two from here to the back.
They were on a grant to install them here. It wouldn't be a grant to move them back there. So that's, we may just do the charge ones here. You know, so if somebody has a vehicle, they could pay to have their car charged if they come here. And we may move that one either to the DPW or some other facility, probably maybe DPW.
You still have one here because you still have a vehicle, an electric, run by the town.
Yeah, so it's a working partner.
Okay. Any other questions on the electricity, the streetlights? Seeing none, all in favor, in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand dollars? Post? Seeing none. All right, let's take care of the budget.
I'll let these two individuals go unless they want to stay for the transfer.
It's up to them.
Unless she needs us.
We'll take a five-minute break and they can.
Well, no, they, we can press on.
Let's go. I'm game for that.
Thanks for being here. We had an over on to how long you were going to take there, Chair.
My goal, my goal is less than an hour.
You lost.
And you're just, and I know you all recognize this, but putting together the police, the fire, the DPW budgets, as you can imagine, it's a lot of work for these departments. They've done a fantastic job in bringing forward responsible budgets.
So somebody know what they're doing?
I bought him a coffee last night.
Well, easy, easy, and cheap. Next year could be a different thing, you never know.
That's true. That is true, yeah.
That's very true.
You know what next year's going to bring?
All right, agenda item number eight, review and discuss the town manager's recommendation to appoint Todd A. Fernandez of Luxbridge, Mass. as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Entertain a motion to submit to council for confirmation.
Sold.
Second.
All right, discussion. Chief or town manager?
I, you know, I'll defer to the chief. I do know Mr. Fernandez personally. When, in my previous employment as an insurance fraud investigator for an insurance company, worked closely with him in the insurance fraud bureau. He is a solid individual. Love to probably have him as a part-time cop or pup, because he is a solid individual, so. These two appointments normally are for, the next one too, the traffic constables. We continue to have traffic details and seek out individuals about the front of the chief.
If I could through you, Mr. Chair, so a few people have moved on, and we've moved them along because they weren't fulfilling their obligations as far as constables, so we're still, if these are approved tonight or at council next week, we're holding steady at thirty. Mr. Fernandez, as the town manager already said, he currently works for the insurance fraud bureau, and I had a relationship with him when he was a major crime unit commander for the Woodsocka PD. Big PD, very busy PD, had a lot of responsibilities. I would love to have this man working here as a police officer for us. He did that job for just about twenty years, and then he went to the fraud bureau where he still is. He's going to be cutting back hours in the fraud bureau, he lives close. And I, knowing him, he will put in the requisite hours that are required to do this job. He'd be a great asset to the community, I highly recommend him.
Anybody here? Anybody out there? Seeing none? All in favor? Post? Agenda nine, review and discuss town manager's recommendation to appoint Kenneth E. Stewart of Springfield, Mass. as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term, effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, entertain a motion to submit to council for confirmation.
Sold.
Second.
Discussion, chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Stewart, don't be deceived, he's a local kid, Southbridge kid, born and raised, he moved away. He was a corrections officer, twenty-one years in Connecticut. And the address on here is the headquarters, we'll make no mistake, he was at the Supermax in Summers for a while. He has a hell of a lot of experience. He would be a great asset to the community, working as a traffic constable. Recently retired, he got out, like I said, in twenty-one years. He's got full healthcare, he's just looking for some work to do on the side. It'd be good to have him in our streets. He knows them, he lived there, he was born there. I highly recommend him.
Discussion? Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any comments? Agenda item number ten, review and discuss the police department's train for requests of ten thousand dollars from account number zero zero one two one zero dash five one one zero zero zero. Salary to account number zero zero one two one dash five three zero 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 zero, specialized services. To cover the additional cost of expenses, the town of Oxford is charging for the use of the animal kennel. the use of the animal kennel, and entertain a motion directly in town council to approve the transfer.
Solved.
Second.
Discussion?
I think I brought this up in the budget, if you have any other questions.
Chief?
Speaks for itself.
Anybody here? Council Mike Eddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So, this is what I see almost every year, we do transfers, and it's always coming out of salary, and that's why I question why we have such big increases in salaries when we don't seem to need all that money in salaries, because I don't know if anybody's ever done a study, I haven't, but I'm just wondering, it always seems to me like the money is being transferred out of salaries into something else. Not saying it's not needed, I'm just, I'm just questioning, why is it always coming out of salaries? Maybe we don't need that much in the salary line item.
So, I'll answer that, if I could. Uh, salaries, we budget for the authorized strength that we have, right? Unfortunately, I think we all know that police officers move on. In the civil service world, it takes months for us to fill that position, so I, a police officer just left, is going to Charlton?
Yep.
Going to Charlton, right? He may have left, what, two weeks ago, or 14th, about a month now, he's been gone, a month. We're calling for the civil service list, and depending on when the test goes, and depending on how the list goes, you call for the list, by the time you get the list, by the time you get them through their medical, through their training, that position has been vacant. So it's not that we don't need the salaries, it's that position has been vacant. We would love to have the authorized strength of police officers and, and not have to transfer for themselves. We're fortunate to be able to transfer from, fortunate but unfortunate, unfortunately because we need the manpower, but fortunate enough to have the ability to transfer. Otherwise, we'd be looking to go, if, if the number of officers was working at the strength authorized every day, there would be no salary line item to transfer from, and we would be looking at other avenues in the budget, i.e. council reserve, or other, uh, stabilization account, or something like that. We're just fortunate to be able to do that at this time.
But this is almost every year.
Because every year we lose police officers. It's a constant battle.
Even more retirements, and no one's committing at less of a rate.
Yeah, so.
Is it time to start thinking something other than civil service?
Yes, but that's a discussion for next fiscal year. That's a contractual thing with the union, that's gonna be a big lift. So that, yes, we will let, well, I've already kind of started talking, not to get off on a discussion, but the union president of our, and our, we've already started a conversation preliminary on how to go about maybe making hiring a little bit quicker, but there's some changes coming in civil service, too. I sit on the committee in the state, and they, they're trying to make hiring a little bit more friendly to locals and not make it, you know, where you have to be local, where you have to be, you know, complete all the necessary requirements that aren't caig. In the 70s and 80s and even 90s, it was okay, but it's getting to the point now in 2024 where you're not getting a big enough candidate pool from the small selection that you have of, say, Southbridge, so now you're a bit to expand it.
We've lost like 14 people in the last, I don't know, eight years, seven years?
Yeah, give or take, yeah.
And they've gone to surrounding towns that were just state police, state police. So it takes, to bring a new recruit on, you're looking at almost probably a year by the time that person, or eight months.
Well, the rea, yeah, the reason why there's a gap now, just to, to bring up the more recency, recent, recency bias, I guess. We've got a candidate right now, we had a person leave to go to Charlton about four or five weeks ago, we've got a candidate in the queue, he's on deck, right? So now, I have to wait till he's also available at Academy. He has to go through all this hiring process, our background phase, psychological, the medical, the physical, drug testing, all that stuff, then he has to wait for an academy. Now there's six academies in the state, I don't know when that, June, July, maybe? So we'll have a, a gap from last month, to Council Mike Eddie's point, of no salary being spent on one officer that went to Charlton. A month has already gone by, and now we're gonna go another eight, 10 weeks, you'll have three, four months with no salary being paid to that physician that left to Charlton, which is why we always have a surplus in salary. But since I've been the chief, and even prior to me, and this isn't just Southbridge, this is everywhere, people, there's no more, they just shop around. They look for the best prices in the fire service, they look for the best healthcare, you know, less work, higher pay, that's, that's what it's become now, this business. Used to go on, like, when I got on, you stayed, you were loyal, that manager that hired you, hired you, and that was that. You were gonna live there, breathe it, and, and, but it's not like that anymore. It's changing, with the times, so.
Is there any other, Councilor?
Don't we have a line item for the, the channel? So.
Specialized services.
That's the, the line item, the specialized services.
But don't we have a budgeted amount?
Yep, you guys, I, I'm just unfamiliar with that. So, to, to answer that, the boarding cost is $20 a day, and depending on how many dogs we have there a day in Oxford, I don't know. So that's why even the $10,000 now, do I think it's gonna go over that to June 30th? No, but this is to be safe, so I'm not in here again in six weeks thinking, hey, I'm a thousand dollars short. Our fees ended up being, you know, 10,800 bucks, now I request it was 10,000. So, per animal, per day, 20 bucks.
So if you get, at the end of this, $2,000 left over, that goes back to the general fund?
Absolutely.
And closes out to free cash.
Yes.
Anything goes back to free cash. Salary lineup goes back to free cash. I had a conversation with Dean and the chief, just so you know, looking at something like to the salary account, just specifically. We have been capital for epoxy floors, I think the cost is $8,000.
16.
16,000. Uh, perhaps we come to council and say, uh, we have X number of dollars in salary account, rather than going to capital and say 16,000, how about we look at our existing operator budget and get it done? So we'll look at those different things, too, but that would all go through council.
Any other questions?
Not only that, but, you know, when you send people to the academy, it's not guaranteed that they're gonna make it through that academy, and then you gotta try and find somebody else. It's happened once or twice before, um, and I know what happens in the state police academy quite often, they start out with 100%, and 30% drop out, then 20 more percent drop out, and they have half the academy graduating, so they don't have all the officers they're going. Fortunately, if I recall, in the past 15 years, we've had two that haven't made it. We haven't had many, the academy as a whole will usually start with 50 candidates, they usually graduate about 35. But usually our candidates are still there. Right, but there was only two that we've, yeah. Good memory.
Five candidates, you said?
Yeah, it's just not for everybody. Right.
Any other questions? See none, all those in favor? All those none, unanimous. Review and discuss the adoption of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, statute of 25 mile-per-hour speed limit on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district in town.
Solved.
Second.
Before we go into this, there's no vote on this, am I correct? Because it's just for review and discussion? Okay. Chief?
Yeah, so I threw you, uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take the temperature of the council, our elected officials. I'm a big supporter of this, I think we should implement it, I think we should do a timeline where we would do it, say, July 1st, put out plenty of, um, you know, notification to our residents that this is gonna be happening. A lot of other cities and towns have already done it, Boston's done it, Chicopee, Dudley is something close to the home, Framingham's adopted it, uh, Medford Cities, Malden, Lynn, Lumenburg, Ludlow, Holyoke, they've all done a citywide or townwide 25 mile-an-hour. Now, don't, don't mistake it, it's not gonna replace, if a, if a speed limit is already posted somewhere in the community, this doesn't supersede that, it stays that way. The only areas this would affect would be the unposted, thickly settled areas that are currently 30 miles an hour, this would go to 25 miles an hour. So I advocate for it, I, our speeding in this community is one of my biggest complaints, believe it or not, with all the violence and all the craziness that we have that goes on in this community, speeding is one of the bigger issues. This will help give us some type of enforcement tool in addition to what we're already using. I just, I recommend it, but I just wanted to get the temperature and see what our elected people thought of it.
I personally think it's a good idea, myself. Questions?
I think it's a good idea, too. There's a lot of black SUVs in this town that fly around.
Yeah, with the blue line plate on it, on the line sticker.
Yeah.
If there's a consensus to put it up, we'll put it up on the vote.
All right.
Chair for you.
Go ahead.
How many road, and top of your head, if you're, you know, like, 100 mile, you have to be changing?
Yeah, I would say, through you, Council Dodgers, if I was to guess, this would probably only impact about 25% of the streets. But the thing is, everywhere elsewhere, it's clearly marked, you're not, you don't really need a 25 mile-an-hour zone, it's that 30 mile-an-hour thickly settled that's not posted, this gives us a little bit more reinforcement action at 25. Now, the state would recommend, because some communities have done it, they went out and handpicked certain roads, but the state says, and I agree with them, first thing ever, it's too confusing to residents, it's too confusing. So, okay, this street is under the 9017C, this one's not, it's just, if you're gonna do it, do everything that's not posted as 25 miles an hour. So any street in the community that you know that's not posted, it'd be, it'd go from a 30, per statute, down to 25.
So Charlton Street will be 25?
Yes. That's one of my, that's one of the biggest issues that we have right now in this community. The 700, 800 block in Charlton Street, it's not just people complaining, um, it's real. Because we put our speed sign up there, we've had people do radar, we've had cars going 80 miles an hour on that street, if you can believe it, because I couldn't, until we actually saw, it's, it gets crazy up there, so streets like that, this would give us a little bit more teeth.
And this will also eliminate the loopholes that your offices have on people contesting?
Yeah.
If they get written up?
Valid point, yes.
It's a 30, 30, and then, you know, tighten up the.
No, and I'm, yes, through you, Mr. Chair, that would eliminate the loophole, because now the whole entire street, done, the whole town would be under 9017C, um, and I just think it's, it's a win for the community, it's, but don't, I don't want to surprise anybody either, I'm not saying to enact this Monday night, but what I would say is, hey, let's talk, let's have a date, let's roll it out, you know, July 1st, give some people, we can educate the public, post it on our social media pages, the town, the police department, fire department, just so people know, you put it on the cable access channel, the councils can mention it at the, the next couple of meetings, I just think it's a good idea for the town.
Thank you, Chair, for you. Who's gonna pay for all these signs to be changed, or new signs?
There isn't any. Anything that, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, any streets that are affected, that are already not posted, thickly settled, so there'd be no, essentially no change. Now, would we, might want to buy a sign as you're coming into the community in Sturbridge and then on the Charlton side, and just say, hey, we're now, you know, 25 mile, yeah, this would be two signs. That's what I would recommend, do we have to? No. Because there are a lot of signs out there, well, yeah, the other, yeah, I'm thinking off the top of my head, the four ways in the town, you know what I'm saying?
The entrance.
I'm sticking to the main.
When's the loud music one?
That'll be next. I'll increase the fees on that, I know we talked about that.
All right, so, uh, Council Mike Eddie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm sure it's a good idea to put these, to make a 25 mile an hour, but some of the problems that are in town are speeding and, and reckless driving, somebody was doing donuts at the corner of Charlton mechanic the other night, and that is the problem, it's not so much that, oh yeah, now we're 25, it's that some people still don't care what speed, and they're just gonna keep doing these reckless things around town, and that's the problem, and I don't have an answer for that either. How do we stop people from doing donuts in the rural intersection on Charlton Street? I don't know. Please, President, we don't have to be there all the time.
Just think of the right place, right time.
You can't be everywhere at once.
Cameras need to be.
Especially when you hit the pole.
Cameras might help.
And I'm an advocate for that, and we can talk about that another, uh, meeting about cameras, the whole downtown should be camera now, but in this day and age, I think so, every corner, every intersection, that's just me, but that's a cost, and we can talk about that next year, Mr. Manager.
The cameras in all the cars.
Yeah, wow, we already, yeah.
Where's the freedom?
The cities do it.
Any other discussion on this?
What, Chair?
So.
For you.
Yeah.
So where's the freedom?
With the freedom?
Yeah.
We'll go 25 miles an hour, there'll be no issue.
Freedom is your right to operate.
Remember, driving, it's not a given right, it's a privilege.
Everything camera, everything.
Nothing to do with freedom.
Anything, everything with technology, camera, they track your phone, they track your house, they track, where's the freedom?
The cameras will protect.
You don't have an answer, it's okay.
No, I have an answer. I have an answer, I just don't want to make you mad. You were one of the biggest advocates for them to wear body cameras.
Yes, because there was a couple of officer.
So where's the freedom?
Making the stories.
So where's the freedom?
So, I'm not saying all of them.
They're to go there tonight.
This isn't safe for the public and the officer to be.
This was a good meeting.
You're over an hour, too. No, no, that was just on the budget, so.
Oh, okay.
We're, uh, far beyond what the item was, so, uh, I take it the chief would like a recommendation from us to go send it to the council for further discussion? Okay, and there was a second, a motion made, executives, so, any other discussion? All those in favor? Send it to the council? All right.
And I would yield to the chief's recommendation effective July 1st, 24.
Hey, Chief?
Thank you. My, my son is homesick, I was telling my managers, so you're on your own.
All right, line item number 12, review and discuss a Friday department transfer request with $3,000 from account number 001220-511000, salary wages permanent to account number 001220-515000, holiday pay to cover costs of holiday pay for the remainder of the fiscal year, entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
All right, discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you'll see the next three items are all the same, they're just gonna derive money from different accounts, and it's for that holiday pay issue that I, I stated during the budget presentation, that it wasn't adequately, um, accounted for in the budget for FY '24, so these are a variety of accounts that we would, uh, recommend to take out of this year.
Chief?
Object.
All right, discussion? Anybody? Okay, see none, all those in favor? Solved, done, unanimous. Uh, review and dis, item number 13, review and discuss a Friday department transfer request of $4,500 from account number 001220-511700, salary wages part-time to account number 001220-51500, holiday pay to cover costs of holiday pay for the remainder of fiscal year, entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
Chief explained it, any discussion from the floor? See none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Review and discuss, uh, number 14, review and discuss a Friday department transfer of $10,000 from account number 001220-518200, assignments to account number 001220-515000, holiday pay to cover costs for appro, costs for holiday pay for the remainder of the fiscal year, entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
Discussion? Can I ask a question? It's $10,000 from an assignment.
Yeah.
Why do we have that in there if we're, next year increasing it?
Because we're balancing out this remainder of this fiscal year, which we had enough with the different changes in assignments. And for the remainder that you have to next year is about it.
Alright. Anything in discussion in the audience? Seeing none here? None? All those in favor? Opposed? None? Alright, review and discuss, number 15. Review and discuss a fire department transfer request for $1,100 from account number 001220-519300. Tuition to account number 001220-519200. Uniform allowance to cover the cost of, for half a uniform allowance for two new employees per collective body in agreement, article number 23. Entain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is that explanation that we had in the budget meeting, why there was a split, the two new firefighters that just started. That's their portion for this fiscal year, that's why they have the other half next fiscal year.
Anybody here? From the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor? Item number 16. Review and discuss a fire department transfer for $50 from account number 001220-519300. Tuitions to account number 001220-524200. Data processing to cover the cost of data processing for the remainder of the fiscal year. Entain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Solved.
Discussion. Town Manager?
It's a small transfer to balance out the account for remainder of fiscal year.
$50 is gonna cover it?
Yep, cable, the cable bill went up.
Oh, that's the cable bill. We don't get free cable in the fire department?
We don't get free cable, any what? Internet?
Oh, okay.
We never did.
I thought we did. Alright, I thought all town room buildings got it. Okay, discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor? Number 17. Review and discuss a fire department transfer request for $3,500 from account number 001220-542200. Data processing supplies, computers to account number 001220-521000. Electricity to cover the cost of electricity for the remainder of the fiscal year. Entain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
Discussion. Town Manager?
I'd just say that, again, this gets to that electricity account that we're really gonna try to get a good handle on, the balancing of what solar price we have and where they're accounted for per building and per account. We'll see at the end of the year how this all balances out. There may be, based on balancing monies that we'll go about actually to free cash. If we balance that out, we don't actually need it. But right now, we need it to pay the electricity bill until we can balance all those out.
So...
He's not buying computers that he had budgeted for.
Right, just, just for my understanding, there may be a suggestion that instead of taking capital money later on, that we would use remaining department budgets maybe as an option? Maybe?
Possibly. I think what we're gonna look is targeted specific items that are small, that we can accomplish within the operating budget. You know, and then, you know, the council would have a full briefing of what those items are. But does it make sense to get a small item down and not have to wait for capital to actually get these things done? You know, i.e., that epoxy floor, when I had a conversation with the chief on the other item, was the town had budgeted for the epoxy floor. They only budgeted, he only did half and half for that capital plan. Had I known earlier, let's just do all the epoxy floors at one time, it would've been cheaper in the long run and just, you know, use money within the operating budget. But I think that's as we evolve this budget process with the team that I have in place, those are better decisions that we can make as we go on. You know, so that, yes, you have a healthy balance at the end of the, you know, at the end of the year, that will close out to free cash, so that, you know, you have that. But also equalize what you're spending on capital, so it's all a balancing act, but working our way through it.
Any discussion on number 17? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Article number 18, motion to adjourn?
Solved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.